A lot of the time when we did our own schedule.
I know.
Good evening. I'd like to open up our regular planning board meeting for November 18th. Just as a reminder, if there's anyone who needs any special hearing devices, please just go on back to the TV booth in the back and they have special devices to be able to help you hear. First thing on our agenda tonight is a presentation for the stormwater management by the Public Works. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Got some information that's being handed out by Silka Sula and Peter Rice. And let me just uncover this, we can get this show rolling for you.
Good evening.
We're going to start with a little plagiarized video clip that the state of Maine has used to open up this topic.
If stormwater pollution was rubber ducky, it wouldn't matter what went down the storm drain. But it does, because stormwater pollution is not rubber ducky. It's soil, trash, oil, cigarette butts, and pet waste. All of us treated into our water. That's not good for any of us, because we all live downstream. Clean water starts with you. So think blue, Maine.
Okay, well, with that as an introduction, it's obvious that we're here to talk about stormwater and its effects on the environment. And essentially, there are some regulations that are out there that are affecting everybody in the city, will particularly affect the planning board. So what we wanted to do is kind of give you an update as to what the city is doing on this and where we're headed. The reason we care about pollution, stormwater pollution in particular, is that the EPA has identified stormwater pollution, or what they call non-point source water pollution, as the number one pollution problem, water pollution problem in the country. We look at Mother Earth, and sixty-five or seventy-five percent of the earth is covered with water. Obviously, water quality is an important issue. So what is stormwater runoff? Stormwater runoff is any runoff from the rain, from snow melt, that hits the ground. It can go over impervious surfaces, over grass, gravel, and it is running into catch basins, ultimately making it into the collection bodies of water, in particular in the city's South Mill Pond, or Scatico River, or our numerous brooks and other mill ponds. Can go to the next slide. Clean Water Act was amended in 1987 to recognize the stormwater issues. I think I can get it here. In 1997, it was the Phase One Stormwater, which actually was intended to regulate large dischargers, which would be municipalities of a hundred thousand people or more, large construction sites over five acres. Next one. And then in 2000, there was the regulations were updated to include communities of above 10,000 and less than 100,000, which is the city of Portsmouth, municipal industrial operations. So that would be any public works facilities, wastewater treatment plants, transfer stations, and airports. So as of 2000, we came under these regulations, along with the following list of forty-five communities or parts of communities throughout New Hampshire. I'm not sure if you folks have seen this yet, it was actually presented to the Conservation Commission. This is a map that actually shows the impervious surfaces in Portsmouth. It shows, the yellow is what was the impervious surfaces in the year 1990, and then the red is actually new impervious surfaces that have been developed between 1990 and 2000. So we essentially, at this stage, we are at twenty-seven percent impervious in the city of Portsmouth. Studies have shown that when a municipality gets up to ten percent, you will actually start to see stormwater degradation. So that's obviously that we're in a situation where measures for stormwater are going to need our attention. So how does this affect us? Well, first of all, there are permits required, of course. Anything coming from the EPA and DES, there are going to be permits. And so we actually have permits for our facilities, our DPW and our wastewater treatment plant. We have a permit that addresses our stormwater system. And then there are also permits for any contractor, which would even include the city who's disturbing more than one acre of land. Part of that permit requires that we put together stormwater prevention plans. We have done those for our facilities. Those were submitted last year. And the key to this whole program is, or the main focus of it, is best management practices, BMPs. And they're broken into six categories. The first category is public education and outreach. What we are doing right here is part of that program, is to try to get this, the stormwater message out to as many people as we can. We've already met with the Technical Advisory Committee, obviously a group like that, given that they are going to be reviewing site plans to assess stormwater impacts. It's very important it gets to people like the Technical Advisory Committee. We met with the Conservation Committee a week ago and presented this to them. We have these folders, or these flyers that we've passed out to you, and also have posters that are hanging in the Inspection Department. And the intent is to just try to get that message out there. So that's public education and outreach. The next one is, sounds similar, but it's a little different, it's the public involvement and participation. In this item, what we've actually done is, is we've put together some strategies to get groups involved and to involve in measures that would actually do some, you know, provide some good. And this is, this is an example of, we assisted the middle school when they went out and painted the catch basins to let people know that what you put in the catch basin ends up in a body of water. So we've assisted in that. We've made contact with the Hodgson Brook Group that did the study for there, and, you know, our intent is to, and again, this is like a five-year plan to develop a network that will allow us to get public involvement and participation. The next one is illicit discharge detection and elimination. Most of you are aware that we have the combined sewer system that is in the process of being separated, but there are a number of places an illicit discharge would be where we may have a sanitary sewer coming from a house that's tied into our storm drain system. It can happen, you know, through a mishap, through a separation, where we did a sewer separation project, and we may not have known where sewer lateral was. It can be just an old area where someone found the pipe and tied their sewer lateral into it. But we've worked very closely with Department of Environmental Services. This is the outfall over by the Albicore, and they went through and any outfall that they could find in the city, they tested it for coliform. And then we go through a process of trying to search back using smoke detection or dye testing and try to find those and eliminate those. So that's something that we're continually working on. Next one is construction site stormwater runoff and control. This is the outfalls that exist over by, in front of the middle school. Those are new stormwater outfalls that were part of the Court Street Project and part of our long-term control plan sewer separation. Those are storm drains, and one is the CSO, the monitored overflow that we have there. But what's also shown in here is you can see the silt fence, and that's an erosion control method. And those are the types of things that Planning Board, Technical Advisory Committee, and regulatorily, we will need to have site review regulations that make sure that those things are addressed and that our boards are aware that they need to be addressed. Post-construction runoff and control. I know most of you are familiar, you've seen, had presentations on the Vor Technics and some of those stormwater control measures. This is an example of the one that we're actually putting in over at, it's actually in the ground now, over at Public Works, that actually is a stormwater treatment unit. So, you know, once a site has been constructed, things like this, that go in, there's going to have to be, they have to be maintained and monitored. I've thrown in a few of these photos of these post-construction, these are the stormwater treatment systems. And if any of you have seen the Fosters yesterday, on the second page, there was actually a fairly large article about what UNH is doing. And they have actually built the only testing facility in the country that takes a nine-acre parking lot and sends all that flow into a structure and then diverts it. They've actually built nine different stormwater treatment units that will actually be able to do side-by-side tests, and for the various constituents. And we are extremely fortunate that we're next-door neighbors to them, and that we know the people that are operating this thing, and that we'll be able to gain the benefit firsthand of what they've been able to test. Because there's, you know, again, this is a fairly new field that we're diving into. It's unlike sanitary sewers and wastewater where there are years and years of different technologies and testing and knowing what works and what doesn't work. The jury is still out on what are the best methods, where you get the best bang for the buck, and what constituents you need to treat for. So this is actually the largest one that we have, it's in Portsmouth. We have our fifty-four-inch pipe going into it, and it's taking that area, more or less draining between South Street and Middle Street, and it's right near the South Mill Pond parking lot. You can go to the next slide. This is, that was it being constructed. So you can see, it's almost, it's the size of a house foundation. This is the finished product, where that concrete surface that's going to allow grass to grow through, but will allow our trucks to get up there and get in there and clean those out. The next best management practice is the good house keeping. This is our Vactor truck, so you see that out quite frequently. We're working on a, we got some of the old bomb-proof laptops from the Police Department, and we've actually put our GIS system that Peter and Jason Wise work on, and we're developed a system that allows the operator to actually log in as he's cleaning those, because part of this is the record-keeping, A, showing the regulators that we've done the work, and secondly, just good practice so that we can see where the problem areas are, so that if we have to do something different in our operations. This is just another example of some of the runoff control procedures that we do. This is over at the wastewater treatment plant, and these are, those tanks inside the concrete vault are chemical tanks that we use for treating wastewater. And what you see here are those, these little troughs, the one on the right, and then the larger trough up on the left. And those are fill spigots, where they actually hook up a hose and fill the chemical. And prior to, a couple of months ago, those things, you know, you'd get a little bit of drippage from the chemical on the ground as you disconnected it. What this has done, this is something that our operators have actually fabricated these, and there's a little spigot down on the bottom. So any of that spillage off of that chemical fill now goes into the trough, and then they can just take a bucket and empty it out if it happens. So these are the types of things that, because our wastewater treatment plants are regulated, that we're doing to comply with these regulations. The next item that we've done is, that's required, is mapping your system. So we've had, we have a GPS system, GPS unit, and we've produced a map of what we know of our system. Now, again, this is an old system, so I'd like to say we're 100% done with this, but you continually find things that you didn't know were there. But the green lines on that map actually represent our storm sewer system. So we actually have 110 miles of pipe, and again, this is all on our GIS system, so you can actually do some analysis of the information that you're gathering. Forty-seven hundred catch basins and 175 outfalls. So you can see that it's a significant effort to control all of these. This is just a closer version, as you go into the map, you can actually see, this is the Atlantic Heights area. You can see the yellow lines represent the storm sewers and little squares are catch basins. As we gather more and more information, you know, right now, we located the pipes, and we also can attach information as to size, when things are installed, conditions, those types of things. So where are we going to go from here? We have an annual report that we have to, will be doing, that more or less goes into deep, a little more detail of all of these activities that we're doing. And because it's a plan in flux, this is a new regulation, and, you know, when you talk to the other communities, you talk to EPA, you talk to DES, it's not as precise as wastewater, where you know you have to get down to certain levels, you know you have certain criteria you have to meet. This thing is an evolving thing, but essentially what we're doing is, we're going to be adjusting our BMPs, our maintenance practices, to make sure that we're hitting the targets. Capital Plan. One of the items, I know the Planning Board will be taking a look at the Capital Plan. One of the things that we've included in there this year is a stormwater master plan. Essentially, we've done the same thing on our sewer system, we've done the same thing on our water system, and this is really to help get our hands around just what we need to do to maintain that system. And then adjusting our operations. Again, as we gather this information, A, we're going to be spending more time on stormwater than we ever have before, and then trying to target the, get the most bang for our buck. So in summary, the, go ahead. Obviously, this is an issue. It's a, it impacts everybody. Things like the household hazardous waste day. You know, the intent, part of the intent of that is to keep toxins from getting poured down catch basins and allowing people a place to dispose of them. So everybody can actually be a part of taking care of this. Stormwater ordinance, that's another thing that you will see. We will need to develop a stormwater ordinance in the next couple of years. And again, we're working with other communities to try to make sure that we're consistent with the area around here. Stormwater master plan, as I mentioned, that's going to be done as part of, we've got that in as a capital project. And then the other thing that's going to impact, the Planning Board will probably be seeing updated site review regulations when those come in, and they will have a greater focus on the stormwater effort. And that's all I have. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Earlier in the presentation, you mentioned that the city of Portsmouth has 27% impervious surface. Do I have that right?
Yes.
And you said that as communities get to 10%, you start to see degradation in...
Correct.
Okay. To me, that's just a figure. I'm trying to get a relative idea of other communities and what percentage of impervious surface they might have. I know, since Portsmouth is so geographically small relative to places like Manchester and Keene, and they have more square miles of land to deal with, what percentage would other communities be?
I don't have that figure off the top of my head, but, you know, the group that put that, that eastern map of Portsmouth together, did other communities, and I can get that, and I'll send it on through David.
That'll give me a better idea.
Yeah, and it is, obviously, we're certainly more urban than a Greenland or, you know, a Rye, but that would be an interesting number to look at.
My reason for that is not so much for the Greenlands and Ryes of the world, but more for the Dovers and Sommersworths of the world that have similar populations but have more land area.
Yeah.
That wouldn't, how that affects it.
Yeah. It wouldn't surprise me to see Dover close to where we are.
Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, you said something about stormwater ordinance improvements or changes, and also somewhat related to that is updated site review regulations. Do you anticipate performance standards being part of this?
You know, after meeting with the folks at UNH yesterday, we were up there yesterday just going through their facility, that could happen, but my sense at this stage is that they have data, and they're not making heads or tails of it yet. I mean, they, the facility just started operating in June of this year, and they don't have the data, and they have the best facility in the country. So, yeah, I would suspect at some point there will be performance data, but we're not close to that yet. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, I just have a couple to mention. Catch basin maintenance. I know you say we have 4,750, and I'm assuming those are the ones that we control, the city ones.
Actually, that does include some private ones also.
One of the things that we're doing here on the board is, when someone is putting in a catch basin and so forth, we're having those maintenance reports, annual reports, sent on to you. Is that helpful information to you? And do you have a system in place that if someone is not maintaining theirs, you can get out there, or how is that working?
I would have to say at this point, you know, it will be helpful information. I can't say as we have, you know, with the, really our internal infrastructure on this and the whole administratively, we're just getting our hands around it. I think it would be good to have that as soon as we can, so that we can, you know, we can actually put together the program. It's something that we don't have the program in place at this time, though.
See, I know, we've been telling people, okay, you have to get it back to the department. And, you know, I don't know if we're putting more hardship and work on you, but hopefully if it can tie under this, under this program, there might be some federal funds or something.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of, a lot of what we've been able to do on this stuff, and this is what, like I said, using the laptop and having the guys actually go out there and log stuff into a database is really the way to go with that stuff, so that you can have some sort of reminder, you know, where the areas are that you have to review at what time of year, that type of thing. So, you know, we've been pretty successful at putting together these programs that we can monitor things. So I would say still send those forward, and we will be able to work towards getting that on a system.
Is there an opportunity or something we can do in funding-wise, that we can add another hazardous waste day? I know right now we do one in the spring and one in the fall. Personally, I have some oil paints that have been sitting in my basement, and I keep missing the date. Is there something we can do to maybe add a third one in the middle of the summer?
It's, you know, it's a funding issue. We can bring it back to the, bring it back to the manager and see what...
Is there federal funds that could be available by doing this type of program, or state funds?
Actually, let me get Silka Sula is here, and she actually runs that program, so maybe she can tell you, because there are funding issues and...
Don't mean to put you on the spot, Silka, but good evening.
That's okay. The city of Portsmouth basically runs the program funded by grant money. It's dollar-for-dollar match, so, and then we appropriate the appropriate amounts with the shared communities based on literal counts of their residents using it. It is a great debate within DES, and I've actually, whenever I submit the grant, put in the comment, it would be a much more efficiently, in my opinion, my small opinion, of how the state runs affairs. Instead of funding each community on this grant money, if they would create a regional facility throughout the state to provide continual disposal options for people because of your problem right there. And then, you're a conscious person. Those who are not conscious, they can't find a way to get rid of it, they want to get rid of it right away, they're going to hide it. So it's a constant, ongoing battle. It is also an expensive, costly battle. The invoices, as a whole, average between, depending again on use and what kind of the hazardous waste came in, on average somewhere between 16,000 to 20,000. Twenty is a high number, I'm giving you. It depends. So that's just one event being hosted there. So it does boil down to numbers.
Thank you. And last question, as a board on a whole, with what we do, and I know Tac takes a good look at the stuff before we get it, is there any recommendations you may have for this board that we could do differently to be more conscious of this issue?
Well, obviously, you know, you see the plans, and I think we're doing a good job of reviewing plans based on our current regulations, but I think, you know, what really needs to be done is if we can, if we can improve those regulations and adopt into those some of the stormwater and runoff control type of measures, I think that would certainly, certainly help.
Well, when we're looking at our ordinances later on after the master plan process, looking forward to any input you can give us, and feel free, if you have anything, to always come with us.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I'd like to follow up on his first two questions. Dave, we've been requiring people that send those reports to Public Works on the catch basins and grease traps and things of this nature. Are they coming in and is somebody logging them to make sure that the people that control those catch basins and so forth realize that they've got to do it on a periodic basis?
Yeah, I wouldn't say 100% of them are. I think some of them are, and it's usually Dave DeFoses is dealing with those, but, you know, as I said before, I think what we could, what could tighten that up would be to have a, have a better link between when that comes in as a stipulation. And I know Jane has done a good job of getting plans to us now, once they're approved, which helps us out, because then we have the approved plan there, and with those stipulations there, we can include that on our database and keep track of that. So, you know, I, it's something that we're going to work towards.
Because you see what could happen if we don't pay attention to that. If somebody misses a reporting cycle and so forth, and all of a sudden they realize that nobody's getting back to them, then it goes down, goes down the sewer.
Literally. Yeah.
And the other question, as far as toxic waste and so forth, why couldn't the Public Works Department collect that stuff periodically and store it at the Public Works to get it out of the cellars and the garages and so forth, and then dispose it when you want to?
There are regulations against doing that. The, when we actually have a household has this waste day, we, it's a permitted type of issue, and the, no, the EPA wouldn't allow us to store that stuff. You have to, that's, you know, you'd have to have a special license and a special permit to do that, and it has its risks involved with it. So, you know, at this point, we're, you know, I think what Silka has talked about is being able to have something that's more available on a routine basis would be great, but we've certainly seen great benefits from the program as we're running it right now. Thank you.
Also, I think your information card is great. Hopefully, you'll have it up on your website, so people at home can get it or have it available for places, maybe the library, for people to pick up and copy.
It's a suggestion.
Good information. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks for your time. Okay, moving on to item two, approval of minutes. We have two to approve, minutes from September 23rd. Any motion?
Still move?
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have outside? Two, minutes from August 19th, Planning Board minutes. Do I have a motion?
Still move?
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on to item three, Old Business. The application of Egan Family Trust owner and API of New Hampshire applicant for property located at 50 Campus Drive, wherein site plan approval is requested to construct a 108.4-foot by 1,100-foot, 12,032-square-foot, one-story addition to an existing structure with related paving, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 267 as Lot 23 and lies within an industrial district. This was tabled at our last meeting. Do I have most taken off the table?
Still move?
Seconded.
Moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. David?
Mr. Chairman, we're still working with the applicant on generating or receiving the report that they are preparing in regards to possible wetland issues there. Therefore, the department would ask you table this to a time indefinite, so that the butters will be notified when this is next concerned by the board.
Still moved?
Seconded.
Moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on, four, public hearings. First, the application of Julian Forture owner for property located at 566 Greenland Road, wherein final subdivision approval is requested to subdivide one lot into two lots with the following. Lot one, having a lot area of 1.6304 acres and 89.54 feet of continuous street frontage off Greenland Road, and Lot two, having a lot area of 1.5093 acres with 89.53 feet of continuous street frontage off Greenland Road, and lying in a zone where minimum lot area 15,000 square feet and 100 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 258 as Lot one and lies within a single-residence B district. We'd like to address this this evening. We'd like to address this this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Shaggin from Ambin Engineering, representing Julie Foucher, who was here tonight. This application is for 566 Greenland Road to subdivide one lot into two lots. The property is 3.13 acres. We're proposing to place a new property line essentially down the middle, creating two almost equal lots, one of 1.6 acres, one of 1.5 acres. As was mentioned, we came to the board last June for preliminary approval, at which time the board discussed the issue. We needed a variance to subdivide this because there's only 180 feet of frontage, where 200 would be required for two lots. You might recall, we had originally proposed putting 100 feet on one lot and 80 on the other. And in discussion with the board, we worked that so that we divided the frontage equally among the two lots. We received an approval from the zoning board of adjustment for this application and are back here tonight for preliminary and possibly a final approval. The staff memo identified four issues for you to consider in your deliberations. The first is that an easement be created to provide for access to the second lot. Currently, there is a curb cut on Greenland Road that serves 566. That would, the existing structure would be entirely on Lot one and meet all the setback issues relative to that. In looking at the lots, we had not, we felt that a driveway would be possible to serve the second lot, a new driveway. But in talking with the owner and looking at the memo, talking it over, at least on a preliminary basis with the city, it's acceptable to us that the one curb cut served both lots. And we would be agreeable to that as a condition and creating the necessary documents and language to make that a part of the subdivision approval. That's basically, the second one talks about the easement. We would prepare an easement and submit it for approval. We would also agree to having the city's transportation and parking director in consultation with the planning department, review the driveway issue. We have no problem with that. We would hope, number four, is that once those things are accomplished, we come back for a final approval. That's okay if the board sees fit, and we hope that you might. We would ask that you possibly consider making those conditions part of a preliminary and final subdivision approval tonight. And that's up to the board. I guess that's the extent of my presentation at this point. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions at this time, Mr. Hopley?
John, just a quick one on your plan. Is that an accurate, I'm assuming that's an accurate representation of the labeled wood, adjacent to Lot two, the labeled wood fence outboard of the property line? Outside of the property line?
Correct. Along the frontage and a little on the side, yes.
Okay. And that's an existing condition?
That is currently an existing condition. And that is a condition that was brought to the city. And I guess I should probably let the owner speak to that.
No, I just, I kind of remember what the disposition was.
Perhaps I can refresh. This is the first we've really seen of the newer plan. What's being asked is, did you receive council permission for the fence to be within the right-of-way? And I'm not sure that the answer there is yes. So I guess the question is, is what is the fence doing in the right-of-way?
Which right-of-way? Let me find you.
The fence is on our property. We pulled it back at the city's request, but not on city property.
Could you just, just your name and...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, name and address for the record. Thank you.
And Julie Sharash. All the fencing is on our property. It's not outside anybody's lines.
I guess then the site plan must be in error.
That's something I'd like to talk to John about, actually. I'm not able to comment.
Please talk into the microphone, just...
That is something I would need to talk to John Shaggin about. I was unaware of that coming into this meeting.
Okay.
My last...
Yeah, I didn't want you to have to bend over.
No, thank you. I would need to talk to him before I'd be able to comment on that, actually.
Okay. Any other questions at this time, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I was wondering what effect that wetland area has on the subdivision.
None at this point.
Basically, just to refresh the board, when you saw this, I guess back in May or
June or so, I think the board made the decision that because of the oversized nature of this lot, you would give it special consideration in terms of the frontage, which is why it was tabled and allowed to go to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment, in its wisdom, I think, also tried to make it such that the frontage is roughly equal between the two lots. The city has an interest in how this area develops because we do have the improvements to 33 that are going on that may affect existing driveways. And so, the intent of the planning department's recommendation is to try to achieve an imbalance where you have some limited development. The wetlands should not impact any future development. If it did, it would be back before you. The frontage would be served by one shared driveway. But the reason we're recommending that preliminary subdivision approval be granted at this time is because the devil will be in the details of working out the easement and the exact location. John Burke has not been able to review the plans or comment. I think the issue of the fence is probably an oversight in can be addressed. Rick Hopley, though, has picked up on a crucial issue. So at this time, I would still recommend that if the board wishes to grant preliminary approval so that we can come back and show that all these issues have been addressed.
A follow-up question, if I may. When the fence was put up, it was put up in the incorrect location. It was put up on city property. And I know that there was some discussion or negotiations that took place. However, if the state of New Hampshire widens Greenland Road for the bridge going over the railroad tracks, that fence could be in jeopardy. And I just wanted to make sure that the applicant realizes it and that we realize it and it's on the record. So...
Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
Just more like a procedural question. Would it be possible for us to grant final subdivision approval, you know, with a stipulation that the fence is worked out with the planning department? It seems like such an innocuous thing by relative comparison to a subdivision application.
I think it could be. However, I think what the department is saying, and especially in the memo and from the presentation we've been given, is that the devil is in the details. They have to work out the easements and so forth for the shared driveway.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Just one, John. If this was to go forward, I would also be adding another stipulation just for the permanent markers be put up in accordance with the Department of Public Works.
Yeah, not a problem. We'll show them the locations on the plan where they would go.
Thank you. Anything else?
One question. Yes. I assume, John, that if preliminary is granted, that we can get together to resolve all the outstanding issues relatively quickly so this could be back before the board in December?
I think we could.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public? I'd like to speak. Two, four against this application at this time. Anyone in the public? Two, four against. Seeing no one rise, third time. I'm going to close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval, but I'd like to add a fifth stipulation, that the resolution of the location of the fence, subject to the site plan approval.
Okay. And would you be agreeable to adding a sixth, that the permanent boundary mark...
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Be put in?
Because then when they're in, we'll know whether the fence, which side of the fence they're on.
Second. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye for preliminary. Thank you. Moving on to two, the application of Moore LLC owner for property located at 235 Commerce Way. Where in site plan approval is requested to construct a 170-foot by 150-foot irregular 28,422-square-foot three-story office building with related paving, utilities, landscaping, drainage and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on assessing Plan 216 as Lot 1-8B and lies within an Office Research/Mariners Village District. We'd like to address this this evening.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Malcolm McNeil. I represent the applicant.
Good evening.
I hear this evening as well as Dennis Moulton from Mallett's Frey, who is the project engineer, Matt Labonte, who is the architect of the building, and Michael Kane is the principal of the owner. On the easel is the proposed structure of Commerce Way in the area of the Commerce Way Office Park area at the intersection of Commerce Way and Portsmouth Boulevard. In terms of the site plan itself, you may recall approximately a year ago, you approved the Hilton Hotel, which is across the boulevard from this site. It's the intersection with Commerce Way here, leading into the Office Park area. The orientation of the building, as you see, if you look at the bump out of the building and the materials that you have, is this very attractive and argue three-story office building that's clearly compatible with the other office buildings in the Office Park and compatible with the hotel that is located across the street. Access to the site will both be from Commerce Way and from Portsmouth Boulevard.
Excuse me, no, I'm interrupting.
I'm sorry.
If he's trying to catch your voice, we'll get a little feedback.
Sorry.
Thank you.
In terms of the access issues, which have been discussed with TAC, access will be both from Commerce Way and from Portsmouth Boulevard. There are 354 planned parking spaces with regard to the site. We basically have overparked the site just to make sure that there's more than adequate parking with regard to the site. The matter was approved by TAC on November 10th, subject to a number of conditions. The total square footage, because it's a little bit misleading with regard to the way the notice went out, the total square footage is a little under 80,000 square feet when you add up the footprint three times, 79,266 square feet. Clearly, a compatible use, compatible zone, fully permitted, and something that we believe would be an asset to the community. With regard to the TAC materials, I'm going to address a few of those and then Dennis Moulton will address others. The TAC requested that there be meetings between the applicant and the legal department and the planning department relative to a proposal for constructing sidewalks along the length of Commerce Way in two phases and detailing how contributions or funds would be set aside for that purpose. That's number eight on the materials that I presume that you have. And that the meeting with the city, item number nine, also include any outstanding issues that may be brought to the city's attention, such as street ownership and the undergrounding of utilities. That meeting has occurred between the developer, Attorney Sullivan, Mr. Holden, myself, and Michael Kane. We have not concluded those discussions, but I think we've made meaningful progress in that regard in terms of issues relating to the ownership of Commerce Way, the undergrounding of utilities, the placement of sidewalks and other issues of mutual concern between the city and the applicant. I'd suggest to you, this is a little bit analogous to the previous applicant, but I would suggest to you that there's the ability to proceed and finalize these negotiations with city staff, hopefully without the necessity of returning here if you feel comfortable in trusting that issue to city staff. But we have started that process. Additionally, there was a requirement for the sidewalk detail be approved as to content informed by the DPW. That's item number six, and will be refined further by the agreement with the city. That would be part and parcel of the conclusion of the discussions with the planning department on the road and sidewalk issues. There was also a requirement in the listing, number four, that traffic issues be consolidated into a presentation that can be presented to John Burke so that he can make a report back to the planning board on a timely basis. We have supplied a writing to Mr. Burke. I think most of you sat on the Hilton Hotel case and may recall that there's an agreement between the city and the developers that up to 244,000 square feet of development off of Portsmouth Boulevard will be permitted without further traffic studies. In other words, previous studies contemplated these types of uses. And we're clearly under that threshold and the city confers with that. So in terms of satisfying item number four, that has been communicated to John Burke and to our knowledge, that is no longer an issue. So in terms of the issues relating to roadway, utilization, ownership, undergrounding and sidewalks, as I said, those discussions are ongoing and we feel can be concluded shortly. And those have been with the city and the city attorney. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like Mr. Mallett to address the other issues on the site and then we'd be happy to answer your questions. And if you have any architectural questions with regard to the building itself, Mr. Labonte will be available to answer those.
Thank you very much.
Dennis Moulton with Mallett's Frey and Caldwell. Pleasure to address you all again this evening. As Malcolm has mentioned, the property that we're presenting is located at the corner of Commerce Way and Portsmouth Boulevard and is in the Office Research Mariners Village zoning district. The current lot is four and a half acres, as you may remember. This board has given preliminary approval to a lot line relocation, which would increase the size of the lot to about 5.7 acres. That was presented by Mr. Caldwell from our office in September. It was again given preliminary approval. We will be seeking final approval on that, of course, in conjunction with this approval. Currently, a small portion of that lot is being used for existing parking for the adjacent building, Lot 1-8A. Currently, on that lot, there are 227 parking spaces. With the implementation of the site plan, that lot will lose 58 spaces due to the loss of the pavement and restriping on the lot. It still is in excess of what's required for the lot, which is 120 spaces. As Malcolm mentioned, this development is for an 80,000-square-foot gross floor area building, three-story office building. We've paid parking to accommodate 354 spaces. That includes eight handicap accessible spaces. And I noted, as I was doing my presentation preparation, I neglected to add a motorcycle parking pad, so I will make sure that's added in the final plan for you. There's a, there are loading zones for the site located to the rear of the building. There's the smaller loading zone adjacent to the building and there are at least seven loading zones in that area of the parking lot. And that's in conformance with the zoning requirements for loading zones for this size of building. The aisle way leading into the area with the loading zones is larger than normal, it's 26 feet wide as opposed to the normal 24 to allow for vehicle turns. The development itself is conforming in terms of lot area, speed frontage, depth, setbacks, structural height, structural coverage and open space, of course, pending the lot line relocation. Landscaping and screening are provided in accordance with ordinance, although we will be continuing to work with the planning staff to modify the landscaping as they had suggested during the TAC hearings. Utilities are provided to the site from existing locations. Water is going to be coming off Commerce Way, approximately at this location into the site and entering the rear of the building. Sewer connection will be made from the building into the existing sewer on Portsmouth Boulevard. Electric will be provided by underground utilities. We are bringing, actually, removing the overhead utilities along Portsmouth Boulevard up to the end of our property line and replacing that with underground to serve both the new office building and we'll also make the connection into the new hotel by underground utilities. Utilities. So that work will be hopefully done in a coordinated fashion so as to minimize costs Gas will be provided. There's an existing gas main on Osprey, which we had proposed to be extended for the hotel construction. Again, hopefully that work can be coordinated so the gas can be brought into the new office Stormwater detention system is a closed system. It's designed to bring all the water by closed drainage back into this area of the site where we are proposing an underground storage structure. It's a structure produced by a company called Invisible Structures. It's called the Rain Store 3 System. I did provide you a copy of their brochure and some backup information on that system. Basically, what it is, is it's a plastic cubicle type of system designed to store the stormwater underground. It's designed with H20 loading, which is a basically track and trailer loading over it as long as you provide enough cover over the structure, minimum being 12 inches. Reason we are proposing this system is because when we get down into this area, we really are having troubles with the grading down this end. As you can see, there's quite a bit of fill in that area to accommodate the parking. If we were to create stormwater detention in that area, we would necessarily have to create a very deep structure at that point. So the choice was between those, and this seemed like a more logical solution. The structure has been in use for, I believe, five to 10 years. I couldn't get an exact date of when they started using it. It's been used in various parts of the country. It's new to this area in that we've just recently had a distributor start to sell in this area. I've done quite a bit of looking at the structure, looking at their various information, and I'm quite satisfied with it being something that is adequate and desirable for the site. The system itself is very efficient in terms of usable volume per square foot of space. It stores 94% of its volume in water. It's easily constructed. Basically, it takes two-man crew to lift the units into place, and with proper maintenance, it should last almost indefinitely. I believe they expect at least 70-year life for the system itself. System construction is detailed on our detail sheets. It shows that the system gets wrapped in filter fabric, and then a bed of crushed gravel surrounds it. In some uses, this is used as a reinfiltration system. We believe that due to ledge conditions out there, we will not get any significant infiltration into groundwater from the system, so basically we're using it as detention only. As such, we've located a discharge pipe at the lowest level of the structure to ensure that it does empty after every storm event. The structure has been sized for a 50-year storm, which would be in accordance with recommendations from New Hampshire DES. We have also provided maintenance ports in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendations so that in case there is a condition which causes siltation within the system, that can be cleaned out. In order to prevent siltation and other debris from entering the system, all of our catch basins will be provided with a covered outlet system, which is commonly known as a snout. Basically provides a dam to the floatable debris and some filtering of cementation from entering the system. So that combination of items, I believe, is going to be, is going to serve this site well. Another reason, as I mentioned, with the ledge on the site, this system would, I believe, require much less ledge removal on the site for the storage system. Alternatives to the system would be large plastic pipes in series, which would require ledge removal over a larger area, seeing as they are not as efficient at storage of stormwater. There is also the footage systems, the kind of elliptical systems that in the past have had some problems with use over years, but I think they've resolved those at this point. But when I looked at the various systems and compared them, I felt that this was definitely by far the best system for the site. To address the TAC items that Malcolm had not addressed, go over them. First item being that the landscaping area between the lots be shown in more detail, and the fence detail for the area be provided in the detail sheet. Again, we will work with planning staff to make those changes to the plans in satisfaction for everyone. Second one was that a coast bus shelter detail be added. We've added a detail to the sheets as shown on the revised plans. It's based on information I received from coast, and we will review that again with John Burke to make sure that he's satisfied that we're meeting the requirements on that. Third is that the drainage report be reviewed by Department of Public Works, and if necessary, recommendation be provided to the planning department prior to the planning board review. We have provided that drainage report, and David Defosis was reviewing. I'm not sure whether he's completed his review at this point yet. I've not heard back from him with any comments. Number four was that the traffic issues be consolidated into a presentation. I believe Malcolm addressed that issue regarding the traffic mitigation requirements and the thresholds at which the property is being held to. Number five, that the water conservation details be added to the plans for the requirements of Tom Cravens, and also include the irrigation system. We've added water conservation notes to the landscaping plans, basically taken directly from the notes that he's provided to us with regards to those systems. Number six, the sidewalk detail be approved as to content informed by DPW. Again, that was an item that Malcolm addressed. Number seven is a letter be provided documenting the wetland buffer is man-made. I believe the wording there should be that the wetland is man-made or man-created. New Hampshire Soils is working on a determination of this. At this point, they have been looking at the history of the sites in terms of the topography on the sites as it existed prior to development and what's happened over the years, especially with the, you know, construction of what worth acres, some subsequent demolition, what regrading has gone on there. They are fairly certain that this wetland area that we show on our plans is a result of drainage that's been directed to that area from the adjacent properties, and hopefully we'll have a letter to that effect soon. Number eight is that the applicant meet with the legal department and planning department to complete a proposal for construction of sidewalks along Commerce Way. Again, that is ongoing discussions with the two departments that the applicant is entering Number nine is that the meeting with the city, also including outstanding issues, may be brought to the city's attention, such as street ownership and undergrounding of utilities. Those will be part of the ongoing discussions. Number 10, that the maintenance schedule of the drainage structures be included with the site plan and approved by David Defosis with a report back on a scheduled basis. We have added the maintenance notes to the plans and also provided a stormwater management plan, which I believe you all received a copy of. It does include reporting requirements to the city twice a year, and it outlines the frequency and type of inspections that are to be conducted on a yearly basis for the structures and for the catch basins on-site, as well as the proposed treatment swale. Number 11, that the report be presented to DPW that outlines the existing or proposed maintenance schedule of the Commerce Way stormwater system. This is a comment that came out of TAC, again with concern over the existing drainage on Commerce Way, and that will be part of the ongoing discussions for the whatever improvements occur on Commerce Way. Number 12, a hydrant be installed in accordance with city water department regulations. At the request of TAC, we did add a hydrant in front of the, or to the side of the building, I should say, on Portsmouth Boulevard and approximately at that location. That was, I believe, the desired location by the fire department. Number 13, the size and type of the water main be corrected on the site plans. We had erroneously labeled that water main. It is now corrected as a 12-inch asbestos concrete pipe. Number 14, that the proposed alignment of the driveway shall be validated following one year of the second occupancy by both the proposed hotel and this subject lot. That having to do with the alignment of this proposed entrance into the hotel and this entrance into the office, and a determination as to whether or not there'll be any problems created by that. If after a year of second occupancy, we would revisit that and find there's a problem, then we would have to address that with solutions acceptable to the parties. And number 15, that a dox box, master fire alarm box, yeah, fire alarm box be installed, and that will, of course, be done and, of course, presented in the building permit review course. So with that, I believe I'm done my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on any items covered.
Ms. Edmonds speaking.
Dennis, question on the handicap accessible parking.
Yes.
There are curb cuts shown for some of the handicap spaces, but the ones that are at the, I guess, northwest corners don't seem to have curb cuts connecting them to
We'll, certainly we intend to have curb cuts for all, off of all the loading zones, so if they're not there, we'll add them.
Can you add a detail for that curb cut as well?
Yes.
For the detail sheet, that'd be great. Can I continue with a couple of questions?
Please.
How about snow storage and removal on-site? How's that going to be addressed?
All right. For snow storage, we do have this area in here available for snow storage as well as the, some of the area along the sides here. It's not a great deal. There's some opportunity out front for some snow storage. Not sure. You left. I would say that anything in excess of what can be stored would be trucked away.
And that, it's going to be stored as it melts, where does that runoff from that snow melt go? Is that designed into the system to be picked up?
Generally, we don't account for snow melt. It's not something that would normally exceed a large event, snow, rainstorm. Again, the system itself has been designed for a 50-year storm, which is over five and a half inches of rain in a 24-hour period. That's a significant amount of water. I don't, you know, in general, the natural pattern would be for the snow stored in this area to drain back into this area, which is the treatment swale anyway. Anything on this part of the property would go back into Commerce Way and into the drainage system out there.
Just didn't look like a lot of area to me, so I wondered where the water was going to go. We might want to have you add that as a stipulation to put notes on the plan relative to that.
Sure.
Thanks, Dennis.
The memo alludes to ongoing discussions with the legal department and the planning department. Here at the meeting, from the second to the ninth, in the memo, there's that discussion. It's mostly on the second. On the ninth, a stipulation is made that you'll be working with the planning department and the legal department. Well, that was 10 days ago. How far are the discussions? It seems that, it seems that the department is, has one point of view that it should extend from Commerce Way to Woodbury Ave., and another is just, it has to be ongoing negotiations. How, that seems to be a pretty awfully big part of this application for us to be deciding on it this evening if it hasn't even come up to an agreement yet. And the other issue is with wetlands, you know, without even knowing if it's man-made or not, or this, or, I'm sort of concerned as to how we should proceed procedurally first, and then, of course, answering the questions. To what degree do we have to worry about the wetlands? To what degree have the negotiations about the sidewalk moved forward? I wouldn't feel comfortable doing any more than tabling something with so many different things up in the air. I mean, we'll start with one thing at a time. What about the agreement for the sidewalk?
At this point, the city and the applicant have agreed in principle as to what forms the agreement may take, but they will continue to be negotiated. Perhaps there is one way I can suggest that we handle this. The applicant has received preliminary subdivision approval, but not final. So one way you could handle this is some of these items may properly be considered as part of the final subdivision request. In other words, they can be conditions there, and you can act on the site review, knowing that your final review will be at the final subdivision. But there are some issues that are, that do need to be addressed, and they, some of the information is still pending or hasn't been received by the city so we can make a report. But the negotiations, I'm confident those can be handled as part of the final subdivision. Because, for example, there's not much reason to negotiate if they don't have a project, because all of these things are happening as a result of this project moving forward.
But that still, that still leaves the wetlands, which is not a subdivision issue, which is obviously a site plan issue. And I got to tell you, we've tabled things for just one big important thing, and I've got at least two or three in here that I'm concerned about, that it just seems like, it seems a little soon to be bringing it forward to us now.
And the applicant needs to address that to your satisfaction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the wetlands question. On sheet two of seven on your plans, the wetlands are delineated, however, they stop at the property line. It's, clearly, that's not reality. So the question I have, A, is how big is this wetlands? Is A? And if you don't have an answer, that's fine.
I don't have an answer to that. The reason they stop at the property line is we weren't able to gain permission to enter the property adjacent.
Say that again, sorry?
We weren't able to gain permission to enter the adjacent property. It's owned by, I believe, Spray Company, and they would not allow us permission to enter the property, so we couldn't flag it.
Okay. That's an interesting dilemma. I don't know how to deal with that.
Yeah, we don't either.
The fact remains that, that...
My impression of the wetland is that it is contiguous with a larger wet area, which would be in excess of the half-acre jurisdictional wetland requirement.
Correct. Now, you don't have a conditional use permit, do you?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Again, it was, based on the information, I've been talking with Larry Morris at New Hampshire Soils. He's very confident that he can make that determination that it is man-created. As a man-created wet area, then it would be non-jurisdictional, and we would not require conditional use approval. But that's all contingent on that finding and possibly subsequent independent review and concurrence by wetland scientists of the city's choosing.
Absolutely. The independent review, I would insist on that. Now, the question is, and I guess I'd address this to the department, in your history, how have other situations like this been resolved? When there's a question that needs answering and the abutter says, "You can't come on my property."
Well, in the first instance, it doesn't involve the city. The city's not a party to it, but I'll answer your question directly. You have an application on this agenda for API of New Hampshire, 50 Campus Drive, that is tabled pending a report to determine whether or not it's a wetland or a man-made structure. structure. And on that hinges whether or not a conditional use is necessary.
Right.
The reason this condition is on there is so that same determination could be made before this came to you, but that information is still pending, whatever preparation and what have you.
Okay. I, I'll, I'll withdraw the question. My concern also, Dennis, is that our regulations say that man-made, man-made drainage structures, and that's, that is different, in my view, from a man-made wetlands. Because this has structures including but not limited to detention ponds, retention ponds, and drainage swales. I think it would be a stretch to call this a drainage swale. So this, I mean, there's, there's, I guess what I'm getting at is there's an unresolved issue in my eyes about the wetland and I would be very hesitant to move this forward based on that simple concern that I have, whether or not this is jurisdictional, whether or not it's man-made, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. It's, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter's right here, you know, the environmental planner, and certainly jump in if I'm stating this incorrectly, but oftentimes what happens is a drainage, a swale that was created, whether or not necessarily for drainage or not, often develops into wetlands and, and is considered a man-created situation and therefore non-jurisdictional. There's been numerous times where that's been brought before, I believe, this board and, and accepted as such.
If that were the case, and, and I'll, I'll grant you, if that were the case, I would be more comfortable getting an independent appraisal of that, you know, of, of our choosing.
I, I, I think that's entirely appropriate.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Did I misstate that or is there a better way to put that perhaps?
Well, I think I'd, I'd probably defer to a little bit closer interpretation to than what Don had than, than what you're saying. A man-made drainage structure would be something that was created as a drainage swale for the intent of draining a wetland. In the case of the jurisdiction of it, if it was created for, for a drainage and over time it turned into a wetland, then we probably wouldn't regulate it. But if it, it just happened to occur because it's been there for ten years or fifteen years because of the way they landscaped the area and it wasn't intended as drainage, then it wouldn't necessarily be exempt. So it, again, I, I think the important thing is the report from the soil sci, wetland scientist or soil scientist to see what they, what their finding is on it so we can really take a look at it. That's what we usually do and then the independent will come in based on that, that study.
Okay. And, you know, I'll certainly defer to, you know, your interpretation because that, you know, that passage is not necessarily as clear maybe as it could be, but...
Yeah, the term "structure" confuses a little bit, but it does go on to say drainage swale or detention basin, so...
And, you know, whether or not this is a necessarily constructed drainage, so, you know, I think part of the, the problem, or not problem, but the issue that we're having with this is that it's not necessarily a, a situation that we were able to control in that drainage was forced onto the property from the adjacent property over the years and, and it's more or less created this situation which, which we haven't had really control over. So, but, you know, I think that can be part of the ongoing discussions and determinations on this.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be helpful to take a look at that report when it comes in and, and review it later.
So, as I understand it, Dave, there are two separate applications, stepping away from this application for a second, that are, are using that particular section to say this was a man-made wetland as a means for arguing whether or not the wetlands are at issue. I would have a concern that this board is yet again faced with someone looking at the regulations and finding a way, go like that. That is my fear. Whether or not that is a fact or not, that is my fear. We went through that when someone comes forward with .49, .48. And personally, I had, that's why we have soil scientists in the first place, I think, to make sure that those things are delineated. And I think to argue that a wetland that is spontaneously created by the processes of abutting properties is somehow exactly what was meant in the intent of the ordinance, I think, is a very sharp delineation between the two. It's the difference between active and passive creation. You hire a bunch of guys to create something, that's a man-made wetland. You don't hire a bunch of guys to create it and it just happens, that's passive. And I think that would certainly be within our purview to regulate it. And if, if this, I would feel more comfortable, because this looks like something above and beyond this particular application, that the board should deal with as a whole and nip it in the bud before we have other applications coming before us saying this. We better have a determination as to what this means in our ordinance.
Yeah, you don't have to nip anything in the bud. It will come to you. Let me suggest this approach. The reason that condition is there is because TAC wanted to have that information. It's quite clear that that information isn't available. My suggestion would be to see if you're comfortable with the other aspects of this application absent the wetland issue. So you can give advice to the applicant so we can keep the application moving or being considered appropriately. That's what's happened, for example, on the API one. You looked at all the other issues and it's tabled pending that. What I'm indicating to you as part of subdivision, we can take care of the global issues. Sidewalks, the agreements there, not to worry about it in the terms of this site review for that one. Those will be worked out. However, you may find that you're uncomfortable with one particular issue, perhaps two. And if that's the case, then let's make it clear to the applicant what it is that you need and the wetland ordinance does give a process whereby this information is provided and an independent looks at it and then gives you the report.
There is one other follow-up that's, that may help explain something. I used to live at 335 Circuit Road before Mariner's Village was redeveloped when I was in college. And behind the house, there was a huge berm. And I think there, I'm not sure and I'm probably misstating this, but wasn't there at some point some stored waste there?
There was, as I recall from my tenure here on the board, however, I believe that is on the parcel to the west of this.
Would that be the parcel that does not want anybody on their property?
I couldn't say, nor would I think that'd be part of...
I wouldn't encourage us to speculate.
Okay. I, the issue is, the issue is that may, I don't know if that's an issue for us, but I have to bring it up to find out if it isn't.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coker.
Thank you. David, your point's well taken about moving the application forward and I, I applaud the department's intent and, and desire to do that. However, if this wetland, and these are all suppositions, if this wetland is not man-made, A. B, if this wetland is jurisdictional, then that throws a very different light on this project. Because then it would fall under the conditional use and, you know, throw a hundred-foot buffer zone on this plan and that, that changes, in my humble opinion, that changes this plan dramatically. I, I believe, I'll just say that and leave it at that.
Well, I, I, I think where I say this thing going is it's probably is going to get tabled. However, before we go there, can we just put the wetlands issue aside for a moment? I really think because this is such a big project and it is before us, we should be, let's, let's talk about all of the other issues and then we'll come back to this. I know we have, we're, snow storage is already brought up, but yet I, I'm also looking at...
Motorcycles and we've got...
Yep, he's already going to take care of that. But one issue that I, I also have too was with the, the lighting plan. I got twenty-foot and twenty-five-foot poles. So I'd like to know how the board feels about, you know, about that. And let's look at those type of issues as well before, and then we'll get back to wetlands and see how we feel at that time. So are there any other comments, questions about the drawings at this point?
Mr. Hopley, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You notice in some of the TAC testimony, Mr. Holden asked about the enormous amount of surface parking and the quick calculation is almost 1.8 times the minimum required. Just out of curiosity, why so much parking?
Well, Michael could probably answer this more eloquently than I can, but basically, his long experience in development business has shown him that five spaces per 1,000 square feet of office space is what you really need to be able to market a building of this type. He has, as you know, they have developed numerous buildings on Commerce Way and they are at capacity with parking and they're at or around that five per thousand figure.
That's a threshold.
So that's what they shoot for generally with their development.
It's around five spaces per thousand.
Yep. Which is quite a bit more than what the, the city requires. The city requirement for this, for this building would be, I think, 200 spaces.
200, $199. All right. Thank you. Interesting, this RS cubed system. Has anyone in your, to your awareness, put this system in locally?
The website lists, the closest installation they list on the website, and I'm sure there's probably others, but there's one in Massachusetts for an office building, approximately, slightly smaller than what we're proposing here for, for stormwater retention. It was installed in the year 2000, so it's been in existence for four years now.
I was looking through the literature and I couldn't find anywhere where the manufacturer has any sort of installation certification. So buy it from us and good luck.
They, they do have extensive instructions on the installation. They have a downloadable spec sheet on, on the proper handling, care, and installation of it. It's important to protect it from, from direct sunlight for, for long periods because the sunlight can affect the plastic, of course. And again, they, they give you downloadable details on, on the installation in terms of gravel beds, the filtered fabrics, and so forth, so...
It sounds to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that a lot of those details hinge greatly on the future success of the operation of the system? In other words, paying attention to those fine installation details?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Without a doubt, I mean, and, and I'm sure the, the company itself, if, you know, any warranty that they would have on the system would be contingent upon it being properly installed. So it's, I think it's to the, the contractor's benefit to follow those very closely, otherwise he's paying for a system that, that might fail.
Also noticed in there, under the, listed under design and technical support, the ISI staff is available for onsite construction guidance.
That's what they advertise.
Thank you.
It's a follow-up question for the department. Stipulation number three, do we know whether DPW has reviewed the drainage report and commented yet?
I know they have it, but we do not have the report yet.
Okay. And then stipulation number fourteen from TAC, that the proposed alignment of driveways should be evaluated following one year of second occupancy. Do we get to have a role in that evaluation? Is the city evaluated by who and commented on by who?
I think it would be very appropriate if the board wanted to flesh that out further. The intent was that after one year of operation with both facilities functioning, there would be an ability on the part of the board to revisit this to determine if there should be a reorientation of driveways.
That's what I'm getting at. I think we should be more explicit there if that's the desire.
Any other questions? If not, Dennis, I'm going to come back to what I started off before on and that is your, the lighting, lighting plan on here. You have the twenty-five-foot poles basically around the, the main part of the parking and then the shorter poles around the building.
Yes.
Do you need twenty-five-foot poles over there especially? We have a hotel that's going to be, it's an extended stay hotel.
We could, we could rework that with the shorter poles. It would necessitate more fixtures, of course, but that's certainly something we can look at and, and have our lighting consultant work up a plan for that.
Yeah, I know we're, in December, we're going to try to get a meeting on, and for this board to kind of get, grab a hold of this issue. Jan has assured me that she can arrange that for December. Okay. And, but until then, we've been looking at things not going over sixteen to eighteen feet. It's about where we've been at. So if we can stay underneath that, I think it'd be okay. So on your dumpster area, is that large enough, not only to take care of the building, but also to be able to hold, hold and store any recyclables?
I believe it is, yeah.
Recyclables? Okay. If not, we can enlarge it to make sure that that will?
Right. Definitely.
I noticed also in, in the rear, on the north side of the property, you have retaining walls and one small area of guard rail. Is that a steep drop-off back there and is it?
Back, right there?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. It drops off, I think, three feet, three, four feet.
You, you feel that's enough on the guard rail or do you think it should kind of bring in that whole square?
Well, it, the grade changes, it's pretty significant through there. So it, it starts off at a significant change and then goes to zero by the time you get to the other end.
Okay.
But I think, I think we've covered the, the area that needs to, needs it.
Okay. And then one last question is the roofing material of the, of the building itself. Is that going to be a, a black rubberized or?
I'll defer to Mr. Labonte on that.
Please.
Matthew Labonte, I'm the project architect. Answer your question. Currently, right now, we'd be using a fully adhered EPDM system.
One of the new, another issues that would, have been brought up to this board and we're going to be looking at, and this seems as a project as any, and that is to, for, encourage developers to start using lighter materials on the roof because of radiant heat and so forth. Have you, any opportunities to look at a, either white-based or lower or reflective light?
Something we certainly would look at. We have been investing in that on other projects. It's, it's a matter of finding the right product that's going to last.
I understand. Is it, from, if I may, continue with, with your expertise on this issue, is when you get into different color materials, do the lifespan shorten or?
My understanding at this time is they're trying to improve the lighter color roofs so that they can get the same durability as the typical darker color roofs that are commonplace today.
Okay. Thank you.
Dennis, the lights you have specked out for this, are those a box light directed down?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, what is your pleasure, board? Do you have any more questions or should I continue with the public hearing? Okay, I'll continue on. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak? Two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public? Two, four against? Third time seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Holden?
Yeah. I, I'm in total agreement with Don. Yeah.
Wow.
The issue, the only issue I make is...
Put it in quotes.
The issue that I present to you is if it is going to be tabled, is to make it clear what the issue is with tabled. By doing that, you're moving the application off. Because I think a lot of issues can be addressed and there may only be what needs to be addressed needs to be identified.
I would agree with that because I, I, I think that not only the issues of what the wetland is, but also, as Ms. Hayden brought up, the issue of the, the storm, the, the snow melting and so forth. Make sure we have facilities for that. Mr. Hopley, then Mr. Will.
Thanks. Just before you sort of motion, I, I'm very, very concerned about the successful installation of this RS cube system. And I had jotted down a, I guess, a sixteenth stipulation that the installation of the rainstorm cube system be supervised by a representative of ISI, that's the company who makes it, and a summary report be provided to DPW and the inspection department after installation.
Thank you.
Can that, just right off the bat to follow up on what Rick had said, because if, in a table, and procedural question, in a tabling motion, if there's a sixteenth stipulation, we have a concern, obviously that's not part of the motion, there's a stipulation, but is that something that can be just stored on the record and we just, to bring it up at the next meeting or something like that?
Yes, you can. As a matter of fact, just like I was talking about the, the bring down the light poles, that, that'd be on the record, but hopefully that, that would still have to be picked up as a stipulation.
If I could make a suggestion that might work the same way? If you make a motion to approve, go through all your stipulations, then table it for the information you need, then you've given the guidance. It doesn't commit you because you can take it off the table the next time and act on it, but you've indicated what you, what you're looking for.
We're being more specific as to what we're, to put things on the table.
It's a parliamentary maneuver that's meant to be used, but it seems like when you explain it, the office falls apart. The other approach is you table it saying, "This is what we need" and you remember to make the sixteenth one at the time.
I'm not here. That's why he wants to be able to...
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's my concern too. And the other, my original question was, as I understand it, this public hearing is for site review according... And the other, my original question was, as I understand it, this public hearing is for site review according to the memo. I, if I remember correctly, we merged the two public hearings, is that correct?
No. This is only for site review, they have to apply for final.
But for subdivision, they've already, we've already received that, is that correct?
They've received preliminary.
Preliminary, but not final, so that has, the sidewalk has, will be brought up in a different public hearing completely than this one?
Correct. For example, let's say this is tabled, tabled, in December, you could be looking at final and taking this off the table to act on, so you'd be acting on both.
So in one public hearing, we would have the issue of the sidewalk, and a completely different public hearing, we'd be having the issue of the wetlands and all the other concerns that we've raised.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, all, all we're seeking, consistent with Mr. Holden, I mean, we've all been here enough times to understand when your propensity is to conditionalize a few matters and when you feel that other things have to be-
Mr. Chairman, point of order. The, the, the public hearing is closed.
Okay, well, I, I was trying to make a comment, if, I'd like permission to do that, if, if you'd like me not to speak, that's fine.
I, I have no problem with, with the comment.
And I have no problem as long as it goes through the chair.
Fine. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we recognize that there are some incomplete matters here. The, the process of narrowing the issues is highly desirable for us as well. So procedurally, we've certainly written down all of the matters that you've raised, including Mr. Hopley's number sixteen. Uh, if we can be assured that those are the issues, we'd like to address those and be in a position that when either this is taken off the table or we meet again, that the resolution of those issues are the matters that finalize this process.
I, I absolutely agree with you, that's why I, I think the wetlands issue is, as I said, I wanted those put aside to make sure we spoke about anything else with the building. Um, I also was raising the concern too with the, the coloring of the roof, I know we had discussed that. We really haven't got into detail, hopefully we can. I'm, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels. I'm not comfortable in making it a stipulation, however, I'm encouraged that the developer will do something in a lighter color to begin the process until we can get some more information on if, if we should be doing this, should we not be doing it? But I think it's, it's something as a board we need to look into. Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna make sure and have it clear in my mind that if we agree to move this forward, save, pick your number of issues, one, two, three issues, that, that will limit our discussion in the next meeting to only those three, one, two, or three issues that are, uh, in question right now. Because there, there may be new information that comes forward, which, for instance, if this is a jurisdictional wetland and they have to redo the plan and, you know, that's gonna change the parking and, I, I guess I'm just concerned, I don't wanna put us into a box here to say that we agree on, let's pick a number and say fourteen of sixteen of these things and only two of them are not, so when we bring this forward next month, we're limited to discussing only those two items.
I absolut, I, I understand what you're saying and I agree with your concern. However, I don't think as, as, either as your chairman or for, as my tenure as your vice chairman, we've ever, uh, limited that debate, although you raise a very valid concern.
Is that a yes or a no?
It was basically saying that, uh, I will not limit the debate next time around.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you think about it, even if there's a motion, motion to approve that's tabled, you've still ultimately gotta vote on the final motion. So if you've still got something that's still outstanding, I mean, you can still address it.
Yeah, if we table this, all we've done tonight is a good faith effort to express to the applicant our concerns as of tonight, and I think they understand that should the, you know, something dramatic happen between now and then, we certainly can comment on those as well. This is a good faith effort to tell them what we think as of tonight.
So with that, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve with the fifteen stipulations, add a sixteenth, and I'd like to add a seventeenth, which is the lighting, and an eighteenth, which is that a legal opinion on the wetlands as far as what is a man-made versus a naturally made wetlands be presented as well by the planning department?
With that last one-
Nineteen, the snow removal, good shot. Nineteen, the snow removal.
With that last one you were saying, for eighteen, would that not itself be the reason for the tabling as opposed to being-
Well, I think, specific to this application, there is, you know, the, the actual topography is the wetlands issue, and then there's a separate issue of is this topography of the wetland a man-made or not man-made wetland? I think those are two separate issues. And also the, the stipulation number, uh, eight is only specific to the applicant meeting with the planning department and legal department, it doesn't in any way discuss bringing that information, the legal department's opinion on the matter, to the planning board, so I wanna clarify that to make sure the board has that legal opinion for the next meeting. And nineteen, don't forget, snow storage? Snow storage.
Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, now, is there a second? Oh, sorry.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coker.
Move, a move, a, a motion to approve, we're approving a preliminary or a final?
This is a, a motion to approve the site review.
The site review, okay, I just wanted to make sure-
They don't have to apply for their final subdivision approval.
Thank you, I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
And now that there's a second, I'd like to move that we table the application pending further information on the wetlands, topography, the, um, the wetlands, uh, a legal opinion from the department on the issue of whether or not this is a man-made or a non-man-made wet, within the ordinance of them being on this application. Um, snow removal, lighting, and let me think if there's anything else. Is there anything else and anybody else? The drainage system?
Construction of the-
Yeah, that's the-
Whether or not the, the wetlands is jurisdictional.
Yeah, the topography of the wetlands versus the actual interpretation of the wetlands ordinance. Um, drainage report, uh, yes, I believe stipulations number sixteen through nineteen, we all had concerns of immediately. And then, I just wait a second, unless someone has anything else to add that they want tabled, any reason?
There's a motion, is there a second? It's been seconded. Uh, tabling motion takes president, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye.
Now, I assume, uh, just for the applicant's benefit, that if all this is together, we can combine public hearings at the next meeting. If something isn't complete, it could obviously be contested.
I would be comfortable with that considering how low Mr.-
Okay, absolutely.
Should we save our plans for this one for next month?
I think it would be advisable.
Hold on to your material. Okay, now on to item five, city council referrals and requests. Does city council referral request to accept Moffett Street as a city street, David?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, the request here is to report back on Moffett Street. The department recommends that you, uh, the department recommends that you recommend to the city council, uh, that the street be accepted upon, one, written notification from the Department of Public Works of their recommendation to accept this street. Two, the removal of the erosion control measures from the property. And three, confirmation from DPW that all payments for all services have been completed. The reason I'm not combining the as-built site plans is that process has been completed.
Okay, thank you. A discussion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on now to, uh, two, city council referral request to place a sign on the back of the school board at Plains Field advertising a local radio station, David?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this has been referred from the council for consideration of placing a sign at the Plains Ball Field. Uh, you may recall that they do place signs up during the Little League sea, season, approximately May first to September first. This is to actually add one more that would be on the, uh, back of the scoreboard. As such, it's a little unusual in that it is aimed away from the ball field and is actually directed at traffic. Uh, while there is some concern on that, which I think the department has essentially put forward to you, it would be of limited size and nature, and we've proposed some conditions that would, uh, be imposed on that that should hopefully, uh, keep this to a dull roar, no pun intended.
Ms. Hayden?
I, I guess I would like to also add a third stipulation or whatever we might call it, is that we authorize this for a pilot as a one-year period.
I agree.
And make sure we're not granting this as a forever sign by accident.
Good catch, Cindy.
So this would really just be for the, because one of the other stip, um, recommendations is that this only be up there from May first to September first.
Two thousand five.
Two thousand five.
But just the one season.
Okay. One-year trial.
One-year trial for the one season only. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I, I question, where does the money for the sign go?
Luckily, that was not part of the referral to, to the-
That's, that's the reason why I asked the question, because I, I see the city crews out there all the time maintaining the fields and they do a marvelous job. And if we make that a commercial park and the money goes to an organization, you know, where does the money go? We have people that give the uniforms, put money in for the baseballs, the city takes care of the field, um.
My understanding is that it is controlled by the league and it goes to support league services. But I am, I don't, I have had very little to do with Little League, so I can't speak from experience.
Well, I, I have-
Oh, we may have someone here that can help us.
We actually may have someone here, if I can-
Let me, let me just, let, let me just finish my statement. I have watched that park go from one sign to signs all the way around the fence. And it's getting to be Western Fenway Park. And, you know, there's automobiles that park out there back of the fence and back of the scoreboard, and, you know, that's kind of a, a sacred ground. If you take a look at those monuments that are out there, each one of those monuments has a plaque on them and it's for a service member that was killed during the service of this country. And I just take exception, number one, to the cars driving all over it and it becoming so commercial. I like to see the kids play there, and I like to see them have a good time. But I think it comes a time in the city's life where they've got to say, whoa, stop here. And first thing you know, we're gonna have signs on the fronts of the si, uh, fence and the backs of the fence, and, uh, it's getting to look pretty, pretty tough out there. Now, if you'd like to talk.
Please.
Lucky you.
We're a friendly bunch.
Well, my name is Amy Trefevin and I do the fundraising for Little League and I'm sorry you feel that way. Um, unfortunately, the banners, um, that we do hang are, are big fundraising, um, well, it's the main way that we can raise funds for Little League, for the kids, for the shirts, the baseballs, so that they can play ball. Um, for the parking, I can't answer that question because the people that live in that area don't like us to park anywhere else. Um, the money that we do raise do go to the children and to the sport, um. There, I don't really know what else to tell you. Um, we've improved the field at, um, Plains, um, we just dug it up and made it safer for the kids to play. Um, we're working on his slot field now to make that more presentable. Um, there was just a ribbon cutting there and we're not done fixing that up. Um, and we're just thinking of more ways to raise funds. Um, there's just not a lot of options for us.
So the money's from all of these signs basically just go to support all of what you do?
Absolutely.
Who pays for the uniforms?
Huh?
Who pays for the uni-
Little League does.
The Little League does?
Yes.
The sponsors don't.
Well, that money comes from the sponsors.
So it goes into the fund and then that?
Absolutely.
What you're saying is you don't buy the uniforms, the sponsors buy the uniforms, they make-
All the money, all the revenues that we bring in goes towards the uniforms and towards the money for the concession stands.
Ms. Hayden?
I realize I'm fighting against motherhood and apple pie here and I'm not gonna talk anymore, but I think you've gone far enough in that ballpark, you know, that's just, that's a neighborhood out there.
No, absolutely.
And, you know, maybe there's a time when you should be looking for a different ball field. If you don't have parking around there to accommodate what you need.
Well, it's not the only ball field that we play at.
Oh, I know that, I know that.
So.
My only comment was gonna be, John, I appreciate your comments, but I think that we ought to think about this as our role as planning board members and, and leave the other aspect to the city council. We, we should think about it in terms of, of the sign only and just in fairness.
I would be remiss if I didn't let my feelings be known on the subject because once this matter leaves here, it's, it's a dead issue and, uh-
And I respect your feelings about the parking and, you know, the memorial that's there, I really do.
I see it.
And he bottles it up.
Okay, thank you very much for answering your questions. Mr. Hopley.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I won't be in favor of this motion, uh, of this favorable recommendation. I, I felt personally that when the signs went up, and I think they went up originally on the outside of the fence and then they finally got moved to the inside, I, I, I didn't, I didn't, I thought it was very poor, in poor taste that they were on the outside, I was glad to see them moving to the inside. And now this is just another way of getting signs on the outside, so I won't be supporting this.
Mr. Will?
I think I'll just vote in favor of mom and apple pie and leave it at that.
Is there a motion on table?
There's no motion.
No.
Oh, a move that we, uh, recommend, uh, the request to place a sign on the back of the school board at Plains Field, uh, with the, with the additional stipulation that it be May first to September first, nine, uh, two thousand five.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Coker.
Is there any way that we can, can move this forward and express our concern, John's concern, to the city council about?
We can move it forward with the, uh, with a copy of the minutes.
In a minority report.
Yes, I, I think, you know, it is mom, apple pie, baseball, and Little League and all, I mean, I was Little League, my kids played Little League and everything, so it's really hard to say no. But, but there's some validity in what John and Rick say about the commercialization of this.
I agree.
If we lived in a society where money didn't mean anything, we wouldn't, and we had all the money you wanted, you wouldn't have to have these signs, but as a, as a statement of fact, Little League and every, every sport, every, every group struggles, every nonprofit struggles for money. And I would be in favor of doing this, but also I would like to have some mechanism for telling the city council that, hey, wait a minute, maybe we don't wanna do a whole lot more of these, however you wanna do that's fine with me, but I think we should do that.
Okay, yeah, I think by moving, uh, moving along the copy of the minutes, explaining our feelings. Especially, uh, and, and I think it will, it will strongly come out in our statement that we've put a stipulation on it for a one-year trial period, and I think- An explanation of that, we should go along.
If you would like, if this motion carries, we can indicate what the reason is for the one-year trial. And I would take it to be concern over funding and the propriety of doing this.
As well as, and, and I think that Mr. Sullivan raises a valid point with, uh, parking around, uh, those memorials.
Yes, you're right, so.
And maybe that should also be brought to the attention of the Parks and Recreation Department.
If that's the wish of the board, we could include that as one of the concerns rather than making a direction on it.
I think that'd be, I think that's appropriate, how do you feel, boy, with that? Okay, with that being said, I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
One, two, three opposed. What's your votes are?
Motion carries.
And my kids did play Little League too. Mine starts the shirt.
I didn't make the tryout. Okay, because you were speeding. Um, under new business, we have the election of our CIP committee. So it is time again, uh, I'd like to see at least three members, I think that's usually what we've gone with, with three. Uh, I will put my name in. Mr. Sullivan is requested, Jerry, anyone else?
I would do it again, but unfortunately, December's gonna be a very busy month for me.
Okay.
I just don't have the time.
It would be an afternoon meeting, but if you wanna try and you're available, we could certainly include you in it. Shoot for a Wednesday or Thursday afternoon is probably what it would be.
It usually goes to one meeting, sometimes we have a second one, but it, I would like to have the requirement that if you're going to be part of it, you have to attend, at, at minimum, the one meeting, if not two, if we happen to have a second.
And so there won't be any scandal, we will be serving pizza to the committee.
Do we have a chance to pick what kind we want?
No.
Insurance won't be there to eat it all.
Right.
Yes.
We got four, we got a-
We got three.
Three.
Oh, John, are you?
I, I'm, I'm really gonna have to pass on this one because just my schedule's not gonna allow it.
Uh, the three of us?
Jerry, John, and- Ken. Ken.
Okay, moving on to, uh, do you need a full, what's that, or is it?
Nope, that's, that's-
Good to go. Okay, moving on to seven, amended site review, uh, plan review for one twenty-six State Street.
The department has now figured out what this request is, and it was so important that we invited John Shagnon here to give you the overview of it. We found it essentially to be minor and would ask that you support it, but we figure- We found it essentially to be minor and would ask that you support it, but we figure it's best to come from Mr. Shagnon, who is the professional on the design.
Once again, John, how are you?
Fine, fine, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't know if you all received plans or not, if you'd like, perhaps, uh, brought some extras to pass around, uh, if you'd care to.
I don't think they made the packet.
No. We only got three copies.
We only got three copies?
Yeah.
And I got one.
You got one.
I had originally just sent four in, uh, not knowing if this would come to the board. Essentially, the, uh, project was approved, I would say, back in, um, in, uh, May, uh, around about that time for a building addition at, um, 126 State Street. The building addition is actually in the back towards the Court Street side, and what you have before you is the plan with a couple of minor changes. First of all, we've, uh, changed the proposed finished floor elevations of the, uh, three-story addition in the back, the nineteen by twenty-three, uh, three-story addition. Um, we've added a benchmark to the plan, and, um, we've relocated the roof drain connection. As you recall, this is going to be internally drained, and we originally had a roof drain